Grove Pride. Clean and Grow.
I'd like to call the Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Okay, we did have a closed session. Item prior to this meeting, there was no reportable action taken. But at this time, we'll have the invocation by Kingsley Okuriki, the Finance Director, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Broadwater.
Please join me and prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we gather here this evening to deliberate and make decisions on issues before us, provide us with the guidance and wisdom necessary to make the best decisions for this fine Gadding Grove community we serve. Amen.
Please follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see we have a presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like Mr. Okuriki to make the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. This evening, the Gadding Grove City Council is pleased to shine the community's spotlight on a group of incredibly dedicated volunteers who worked tirelessly to uphold the Gadding Grove Strawberry Festival's reputation as a signature event in the Gadding Grove community. Will Debbie Mahoney, the 2012 Strawberry Festival Association President, please come forward? Also, if any Association members are present tonight, please stand now to be recognized. Thank you. Each year, community leaders volunteer hundreds of hours, planning and coordinating one of the largest community festivals in the western United States. For 54 years, Strawberry Festival has celebrated the agricultural history of the city, highlighting the role of the strawberry in that tradition. The festivals, rides, parade, contests, shopping, and entertainment attract people from far and wide. The theme for the 2012 Strawberry Festival was honoring first responders. In keeping with that theme, Los Angeles Fire Department Captain Stacy Gurley, who heads up the Community Emergency Response Team, also known as CERT, served as the theme grand marshal. Emmy Award-winning actress Mariette Hartley served as the parade grand marshal. The nonprofit Strawberry Festival Association has raised over $5.5 million for local charities since its inception in 1958. Locally, some of the beneficiaries have been the Boys and Girls Club of Gadding Grove, Kiwanis Land, homeless and victims of domestic violence. This was the second-best year in the history of the festival, and over $120,000 in donations has been awarded back to the Gadding Grove community. Several nonprofit organizations also had the opportunity to earn money through game and food booths at the festival. At this time, the mayor and City Council would like to present the president of the 2012 Gadding Grove Strawberry Association, Debbie Mahoney, with a memento of appreciation. These tireless efforts of your committee to organize the Gadding Grove tradition is appreciated far and wide. Thank you.
Okay, why don't you turn this way? We'll also get one for the chambers here.
I just want to thank all of you for this award. I know a lot of you on the City Council. Some of them are my dad's friends, so I feel like that's a family. I want to thank my Strawberry Festival Board for all the volunteering they do. Nobody gets paid. Nothing is a paid position. It's all volunteers. And if it wasn't for all my friends, which I call my friends, we would not be able to make the money that we do and donate back to the community. I did want to say one thing. On July 4th, we lost one of our directors, Dan Roulette. He was killed in Anaheim. So with a heavy heart, I accept this and with honor for him. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll open all communications for the council and the successor agency. Josh McIntosh.
Good evening, members of the council and good residents of Garden Grove. I come tonight to speak to you about something I saw in the Orange County Register yesterday, which states, "Live entertainment. The City Council on Tuesday will consider whether to allow changes to live entertainment laws." The owner of On the Rocks Bar &amp; Grill at 12752 Valley View Street requested the amendment so the restaurant can feature a two-piece band and karaoke. Well, this hits home for me. So first, as an entertainer myself, I found that it's very hard to get work inside of Garden Grove. Our neighborhood bars and alcohol-serving restaurants have a lot of restrictions on getting live entertainment. I think that's a shame. I don't want you to think this is just about me, so I'm going to explain how it affects the larger picture. I'd love to have more gigs in Garden Grove and perform as much as possible, but unfortunately, I'm restricted on the most local and immediate level. It's a shame because a person who strongly believes in buying in Garden Grove, I make less money and I have less money to spend at our local businesses. That trickles down to the business owner's financial problems. The next thing you know, we could have another vacant storefront. The small businesses we have deserve some help from the city, especially in this long-term recession. I believe that the city has set up too many limitations, too many restrictions, and also too much of a financial burden upon the people who are trying to run their business and make a living here. There are many establishments in the city which have been denied the right to allow amplified or live music to be performed. We really don't have a lot of options in the city when it comes to nightlife, unfortunately for us. If we wanted to actually dance somewhere, we'd have to leave the city. There are a lot of people who don't even consider Garden Grove an option when it comes to an evening out on the town, and I believe our current system has a lot to do with that. Our bars and restaurants could be getting the money that is going to other cities because we make it too hard on our local businesses to offer any type of entertainment. We'd be in a better position to offer these bars a hand and help them out. I'm certain we want the revenue from those people that go out on dates or with groups of friends, and they'd like their chance to hear some live music, or dance to a DJ, or sing a little karaoke in Garden Grove. It'd be nice to have our Gem Theater back up and running. That would offer us a lot more entertainment down on Main Street in the evenings. I'm sure it'd bring more customers and the city. Everyone would win. So essentially, if we continue to limit our possibilities and stay this course, we're going to continue to limit income for the city of Garden Grove.
Thank you.
Thank you. John Hoagland, please. I'm sorry? Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. You're going to...
Yeah.
We'll hold it open for you. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, I see no other cards. I'll close oral communications, and we will go to the successor agency.
I'm sorry, Mayor, you have a...
Written communication.
Okay. It's a request from Fiesta Edaviva, Orange County, to use the CMC. Do we have further information on that?
Yes, Ms. Foye will provide you an update on this item.
Hey, members of the City Council. We were approached by this organization requesting use of the Community Meeting Center for two dates, one in October on a Friday and one in December on a Saturday, for use for leadership or for a conference and also for a Christmas event. This organization is not a Garden Grove nonprofit. It actually exists in Anaheim, and our policy requires that 51% of their clients be Garden Grove residents, and I don't believe that they are, nor could they prove that they are. So staff is recommending that we not authorize approval of this request.
Is there anyone here from this organization?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Ms. Brummer, go ahead.
I'll make a motion. We go along with the staff's recommendation.
Second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Thank you.
Okay, now I think we'll go to the successor agency.
Thank you. We'll now convene the July 10th session of the Garden Grove Successor Agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Dalton?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communications in conjunction with City Council, so consent items. We just have minutes from April 24th.
Move it.
Second, call the vote.
Second.
Motion received, five yes votes.
No public hearings, no items for consideration, any matters? Seeing none, we'll convene back to City Council.
Okay, let the record show that all members are present, and we'll go to consent items.
Mayor, it's recommended that Items 6A through 6F be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a councilmember.
I'd like to pull 6D. I don't believe I was there for that day.
Okay, do I have a motion on the rest?
So move.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
And 6D? Is that the one you said?
6B.
Okay.
D, like David. Do I leave?
No, no, just separate motion.
So we need a motion for the 6D item?
Correct.
Okay, I'll move it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote. Okay, public hearings. Did you vote yet, Bruce?
What are we voting for?
6D. The minutes.
6D, the one Dana abstained on. The minutes.
Motion received, four yes votes, with Councilmember Nguyen abstaining.
Okay, public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, your first public hearing is to consider a planned unit development amendment, and Chris Chung is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The subject planned unit development, PUD-105-76, is located on the east side of Valley View Street, south of Lampton Avenue. It's approximately 9.6 acres in size and is currently developed with nine commercial and industrial buildings in the Bridge Creek Business Park. The owner of On the Rocks Bar &amp; Grill, an existing full-service restaurant, is located within Bridge Creek Business Park at 12752 Valley View Street Suites V&amp;W, and has requested an amendment to the PUD-105-76 zone to allow limited live entertainment for eating establishments with certain development standards, subject to conditional use permit approval. In conjunction with this request, the applicant also requested contingent approval of a conditional use permit in order to integrate the existing 3,305 square foot second floor of the building with the existing restaurant for overflow seating and to allow live entertainment in the form of a two-piece band and karaoke along with the raised stage. On May 17th, 2012, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the requested PUD amendment and conditional use permit. Other than the applicant, no members of the public came forward to speak in favor of or in opposition to either request. However, staff did receive five letters from the public expressing concern over noise issues associated with the live entertainment. The Planning Commission adopted Resolution Number 5773-12, recommending approval of planned unit development number PUD-105-76 revised 12. The Planning Commission also approved conditional use permit number CUP-353-12, subject to the City Council's approval of the PUD amendment. Therefore, the Planning Commission recommends that the City Council hold a public hearing for consideration of planned unit development number PUD-105-76 revised 12, amending the PUD-105-76 zone to allow limited live entertainment for eating establishments that have ground-floor storefronts facing Valley View Street with a minimum floor area of 5,000 square feet and a minimum distance of 150 feet away from a residential property boundary or any property containing a residential use, subject to conditional use permit approval, and to introduce and conduct the first reading of the attached ordinance approving planned unit development number PUD-105-76 revised 12. And conclude staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Just clarification. So is it Friday and Saturday? Is karaoke only?
That is correct.
Okay, and the two-piece band, when is that allowed?
Seven days a week.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll open a public hearing. John Hoagland.
I think it may have been more appropriate for my comments at the same time as the other musician. I actually don't live in Garden Grove. I'm wanting to speak as a musician in Orange County generally, and I try to speak on these issues that entertainment is restricted. So this might be getting a little off-topic at this point in the meeting, so I defer to you, but I just had a few comments like his regarding music, and my comments might be appropriate for your considerations. A lot of... What is being banned here is noise and alcohol. And I'll just say, in Orange County, the history is, 20 years ago or so, we had live bands just about everywhere. You could go out and catch a live band, and there's been a push to restrict drunk driving, and that has resulted in less people going out. But also, there's been a movement of live music towards karaoke. And don't get me wrong, I'm one who does karaoke, and I enjoy it, but I'm also a live musician, and I play, actually with karaoke sort of as a backup, and I play music along with that, instruments, and I also play in bands. So I play the whole gradation. And I would say there's a karaoke double standard, that karaoke is allowed in many places in Orange County where bands are not allowed. And that... In Orange County, it usually comes out as you need an entertainment license to play live, but you don't need an entertainment license to have karaoke. And this, I think, is a double standard on musicians. And you can play one-man bands and two-man bands.
Okay, that's really not addressing the issue of this public hearing, so...
Okay.
Would you wrap it up then if you...
Yeah, I'll wrap it up, and I'll just say that what you want to restrict is the decibel levels and not amplification, because I play a keyboard and I play it quieter than a car radio. And I also play a saxophone, and that ends up being louder than my keyboard, so the issue is noise, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Charles Mitchell, you have a card filled out?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. The issue here is whether to allow live entertainment at a restaurant on Valley View. But the issue goes beyond that. I think it's appropriate that we do everything we can to encourage visitors to come to Garden Grove and to experience our restaurants, and I think live entertainment is a contributing factor to drawing people. And along with that, I think we might consider allowing the live entertainment aspects on Main Street to draw more people to our downtown area. Now, one thing puzzled me on this, and that was at the end of the ordinance, it mentions any property containing a residential use. Now, my question is, there are some residential uses on the upper stores, upper stories of some of the buildings on Main Street. Now, would that mean this ordinance would prohibit any of those restaurants from having live entertainment because they're within 150 feet of any of those residential areas? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see no other cards, no one to speak, so I'll close the public hearing. Can you give me an answer, though, to that question that Mr. Mitchell had?
This particular PUD amendment applies to only this property, so...
So the residential in that, within that area doesn't apply?
Doesn't apply to Main Street. I mean, Main Street has its own set of rules and regulations, but...
Got a mixed-use overlay there.
Yeah, but this particular 150 feet refers to only this property.
Okay, all right. I'll entertain a motion.
Move the issue.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
7B.
Mr. Mayor, 7B is a public hearing to consider the assessment for the Main Street Assessment District Number One, and Anna Neal is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. You have before you the final step in the process to establish the annual assessment for Main Street Assessment District Number One. On May 22nd, 2012, City Council approved the engineer's report and set the protest hearing day for today, July 10th. The assessments remain the same from the previous year, and maintenance activities will also remain the same. In accordance with the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, the remaining action for City Council is to hold the protest hearing and adopt a resolution confirming the assessments for the Main Street Assessment District Number One for fiscal year 2013. Staff recommends that the City Council open the public hearing and take public comment, adopt the attached resolution confirming the proceedings and assessments against the individual parcels, and ordering the proposed maintenance to be completed in accordance with the engineer's report, and to direct the city clerk to file and record the assessments with the county auditor for collection of the assessments on the tax roll. This concludes my report, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. You have to do 7B, too?
Yes, but before we do that, Kathy Baylor needs to report that there were no written protests.
Okay, that's under 7B, too.
There were no written protests received.
Okay.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second? Did we do that already?
That's 7B.
Let's do it again, because I know what the outcome's going to be.
I announced it was five yes votes.
Okay, you can do it again if you like. Okay, 7C.
7C. Mr. Mayor, 7C, D, and E are all separate public hearings, but Anna Neal is going to give one staff report, so after her staff report, we'll actually open up three different hearings and take three different actions, but we'll have one staff report.
Okay.
Thanks again, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, tonight the City Council is asked to consider holding a public hearing and adopt the resolutions for collection of assessments on the city's street lighting and park maintenance districts. On May 22nd, 2012, three resolutions of intention to levy and collect these assessments were adopted by the City Council. The purpose of the assessments is to pay for the operation and maintenance of the street light and park districts. An engineer report has been prepared and is on file for the three districts with the Public Court Department detailing the costs and assessments. A public hearing is required by law, and its purpose is to hear testimony on the questions of the annual assessments. Once the hearing is complete, the resolutions may be adopted. Should the resolutions pass, the required information will be forwarded to the county assessor for collection of the assessments. The assessments will raise approximately $1.3 million in street lighting revenue and $700,000 in park maintenance revenues. There are no increases in the assessment rates, and there are no new zones in the district for this year. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, under 7C, correct.
Well, any questions on any three?
Staff, are there any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, anyone?
So we'll open a public hearing on 7C first, the...
Then we'll do D, and then we'll do E.
Right.
And only one report we've had already.
Correct.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Move the resolution on 7C.
One more thing.
The city clerk's office received no protests.
Second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, under 7D, do you have any questions for staff?
No.
Okay, hearing none, I'll open a public hearing. Anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
No protests were received.
Move the resolution.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. 7E.
7C, five yes votes.
7E, we've had the report. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll open a public hearing. Anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
No protests were received.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nguyen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, Commission matters under Number Eight.
You have a letter of resignation from Sanitary District Advisor Commissioner Harry Pierce.
Okay, we accept with regret and sent a letter thanking him for his service. Okay, down to just about everything, Bruce.
I've got a couple of things I'd like to talk about. Leah Cecil, Miss Garden Grove from two years ago became Miss California this week, and she was a beautiful girl, she's a great singer, and she's a harpist. I mean, this girl's got a lot of talent, and she'll make a wonderful Miss California. That's the second time since I've been on the council that a Miss Garden Grove became Miss California. So it's... I'm sure she's... I'm sure we'll see a lot of her around here. Everybody will want her to be at their event to sing the opening song and everything else, so we'll see a lot of her. So it'll be great. The second thing I want to talk about is Lampton Avenue. We had another death coming down Lampton Avenue, and apparently, I did look at the police report, seemed the fellow was traveling between 70 and 90 miles an hour, and I asked the city manager to change that light from a red and green light to a constant red light, red blinking light, until we can figure out what we need to do on that corner. That's the second death we've had, and I do believe that the City Council needs to take a really hard look at it and see if we can't fix it. Dana? Outside of that, I'm done.
Talking about lights, can we get someone to look at Dawson and Westminster? I asked for that about two years ago, and I know we're waiting for the budget on that, but can we give that some priority? That has a lot of accidents in that area, too. I want to congratulate Leah Cecil, and I want to wish her good luck on the Miss America pageant. I think she's a great candidate, a good representative of Garden Grove, and she has a very good chance to be Miss America. A matter that has been a problem for a lot of residents in Garden Grove is their homes are under, and they're having a hard time paying for their homes. And I want to warn everyone out there that the loan modification programs from the banks, 99% of the time, do not work, and they milk the homeowners out of the remaining savings, and most likely, they will be foreclosed. So if you get into a situation where you can't pay anymore, don't try to bank on the loan modifications. Go for the short sales. I have written to the White House Committee on Fair Housing and also the committee on that manages the different banking system. I have requested that they looked into the system, the procedures that the banks are doing with the loan modifications and how homeowners are not being helped, but they are losing their homes. So I have yet to be responded from the White House, and if I get any news from them, I will let you know. Thank you. at the Concerts in the Park.
Thank you. Okay, I, too, would like to join in, thank, in congratulating Leah Cecil for Miss California. She's really a very, very nice young lady, very talented. One thing I could say about her, after her term from Miss Garden Grove was over, she still frequented any of the different Silver Spoons, all these different events that go on in the community, and she played the harp, and she socialized, and she did everything, even when she wasn't raining. I mean, that's the kind of person she is, so hopefully, she'll take Miss America. That'd be neat. I am going to close the meeting in the memory of Dan Roulette. Although Dan lived in Westminster, he was really involved in Garden Grove. His business was in Garden Grove. I'd been a director of the Strawberry Festival Board. He was on the board of trustees for the Elks Lodge, involved with the Moose, with the Shriners. And services will be for Dan at Friday at the Garden Grove Elks Lodge at 11:00 AM, and that's at New Hope and Trask in the city of Garden Grove. One other thing, too, that his daughter Stephanie and son-in-law Chris White are both work for the police department, and it's not only a terrible loss to a person that's very civic-minded and community-minded, but it's a terrible loss to part of our family, to our city family. And he was a victim of what appeared to be a random robbery that went bad, and he was stabbed to death. The suspect was taken into custody and has been arrested, but the loss is going to be felt for a long, long time. So in honor of Dan Roulette, we will adjourn the meeting tonight until the next city council meeting, Tuesday, July 24, 2012, at 5:30 PM in this building. Thank you.